Okay, I have 5:30, so we can go ahead and get started. This is our November study session for the VPS Board of Directors. These are the meetings where we get to do a little bit of a deeper dive into some of the topics. And I'll go ahead and start with roll call. We are not taking any action tonight, but we'll go ahead and get started with roll call. Director Barrows?
Here.
Director Smith?
Here.
Director Zavala?
Here.
And I am here. It looks like Director Decker. Oh, Director Decker. Just doing roll call.
Okay. I'm here.
We're all here. So I'm going to pass this off to Dr. Snell. We are doing just three agenda items tonight.
Thank you, Kyle. I am trying to share my screen. It's delaying a little bit. Is that showing up for you all now? Great. I'm going to put it into present mode and we'll get started with our agenda today. As you mentioned, we actually have kind of a fourth item, but that's typically our board reporter for development. And so just an opportunity for folks to share where you're at with some of our learning that we've done recently. But our first topic tonight is leadership transition. And when I was hired as superintendent, one of the things that I spoke to you all about is to assemble a team of representative stakeholders to help identify some short-term goals related to the transition in leadership. And we have two members of that committee here this evening with us, Talina Borchers and Emily Anderson. And so I'm going to turn it over to them to share a little about the experience so far and the draft goals that have been developed. We also have on the call Tom Hagley, who serves on that committee as well. So he may pipe in or answer a question that comes up if there's something from the board. So I'll turn it over to Talina and Emily.
Hi, guys. Thanks for having us tonight. Emily and I got a chance to meet this afternoon to kind of talk a little bit about what we would share with you. And so we're excited to not only talk to you about the process and our experience on the board and the goals that we have, but also our experience as members too. So I think that we do have kind of the introduction slide and the outcomes and stuff there. We want to pull that up. So Jeff, you wanted us to go over this part two? Okay. So the outcome and the process that we are doing in this team is to analyze the data collected through the superintendent's leadership transition and establish three to four, four short-term goals for the transitions. We have four goals that we're going to share with you tonight that have kind of been developed since we started this process in September, end of August, we started getting emails and it's so it's been in the plans for quite a few months too. Also, to be able to monitor that progress and connect transition to district strategic plan through a transition report that would be shared with each of you guys. In this process, we build a collaborative team that represents the larger district and utilizes a leadership transition to develop relationships through the shared experience. And I think the most exciting thing about this with the collaboration is how many stakeholders are really part of this team? Because it's not just staff, it includes students, it includes community members, it includes parents of all different types in, you know, we have some that have maybe a special needs child in the district as well as older students, elementary students as well. So we really have a broad range of voices that are shared on this team. Emily and I wanted to tell you a little bit about our experience and our role and why we're here tonight too. We were excited to share with you. For me personally, I have Vancouver roots. I grew up and went through all the Vancouver Public Schools. I went to Lake Shore, then Jason Lee and Columbia River. And working in the Vancouver Public Schools is a family profession. Not only do I work in Vancouver Public Schools, but my mom does, my brother does, and my husband. So we've got a lot of roots within this district. I've worked 17 years at Chinook and I've had different roles. The most that I have done in those 17 years has been a second grade teacher. I'll talk a little bit about that. I'm currently the achievement coach though there right now. And Emily happened to be one of my second grade students in 2011 and 12. So I'm excited to she give it over to her so she can share her experience before we talk about our goals tonight too.
Hi, good evening. I'm Emily. I, yes, like Talina said, was one of her students when I was in second grade and I think that was the 2011, 2012 school year. I'm now a senior at Skyview High School. And I am just really overflowing with gratitude for the opportunity that's been given to me and to the rest of the community to provide this input and hopefully make some positive changes in the district and head in the right direction. I also have roots here in Vancouver. This is the house I've grown up in and I've gone right down Bliss Road and ended 139th Street at Chinook, Alkai, and now finishing up at Skyview. And so I think that it is very cool and very, I think, just nice and refreshing that it's coming full circle time here in VPS, especially working with Talina on this project and again, everyone else in the community. So it feels like although I'm going off to college next year, I am leaving a good, like I'm leaving in a good place mentally out of, out of VPS. So we're really excited to continue working, sharing these goals with you guys. So the first goal that we set was based on communication. And so over the past, sorry, if whoever's doing the slideshow wanted to hit the next, I think that's all we had for introductions. Just so the board can, I don't know, maybe it's not, maybe it's just my screen that doesn't show, but if, yeah, perfect. There we are. So the first goal that we set after kind of evaluating and looking at raw data, looking at feedback from students, from parents, from the community. We had identified and addressed some of the issues that we felt the district was facing. Communication was one of the big themes. And so our, our goal that we just recently set for communication is to by 2/30th have all VPS stakeholders aware that the superintendent and this transition team have developed the framework of set or like the set criteria to guide these large-scale decisions so that everybody feels that they're included and all input will be valued and we want everybody in the community to know that there will be multiple different ways that they can provide feedback to the district and that their feedback is truly valued in that decision-making and that the trust is there and it's built and that we can just continue to be as transparent as possible with parents and teachers and community members.
Okay, and I'm going to do relationship, which is pretty exciting too, because I think back to our first meeting that we had as a group and one of the things that really stood out is as we had a bunch of different people at a table. Emily was at my table, so we got to hear a student voice. We also got to hear a parent voice at the table and then I kind of had that staff voice. And I think we also had one other principal that was at our table as well. We started talking about some of the things that we were feeling might need to be addressed. And as we shared our concerns, we realized that it really boiled down to relationship for all of us. And those same conversations were happening at every table. So the relationship goal that we set upon was that by June 30th, 2022, VPS staff will know that the superintendent and district leadership team have engaged with employees directly to solicit their input. That could be through the thought exchange that we've done already or all staff, staff connect meetings and surveys. And conducted informal site visits to every school and work site, paying close attention to students, staff members and our programs that that might otherwise be overlooked. So really getting that student voice that we felt could be missing in some places, but also going to the bus garage and going down to grounds and not just going to the school buildings, talking in the kitchen at each of the schools to make sure that we're hearing from everybody that could have some direct input on what's happening and what they're seeing as well as community members too.
And with that, we moved into kind of the goal that we set for students. And being a student myself and having been educated, my entire, like my entire educational career has been through VPS. I felt that it was really important that we find a way to improve access to students and getting that student voice and the feedback from them. I mean, I think that district employees can collectively agree that every day they come to work, they're there for the kids. And students deserve, absolutely deserve a seat at the table. And in a lot of the huge decisions that will ultimately affect their day-to-day lives at school and their futures, that's huge for us students and policies, teachers that are made will affect how I'm educated and then how I go on to live my life ultimately. So I'm super important that we put a plan in place by June 30th so that the students will know the superintendent and the district leadership team and the school, the school board have all established processes to amplify student voice and create more opportunities for every student to share their experiences through multiple different methods, whether that be the student advisory committee that we have rolling right now. Thought exchange, surveys, you know, just even having administrative visibility is huge.
Okay, and the last goal that we have developed on the team is the vision statement. And I think that this one was one of the hardest ones for us to kind of put together. What the group really was talking about is, is that it really doesn't have to be something that the vision is created right now, that it's an ongoing process to get there. So this one says that the stakeholders will know that the superintendent and district leadership team have initiated a strategic planning process for the 2022, 23 school year with broad and diverse public engagement opportunities to create a shared vision and identify goal areas, target objectives, and measurable outcomes for the next five years. One thing that was really talked about the last meeting is not moving fast now to have that vision, but having a place like Emily has talked about, how I said in some of the other statements too, is that everybody has a chance to bring that, bring their voice into the plan rather than the plan being created. So kind of really making sure that process is there before we go fast with that vision statement and strategic planning going forward. Outside of the goals, I just want to say how nice it's been that we can really hear the voices and that team is just fantastic because there are so many different perspectives and everybody is just so gracious and kind and listening to one another and really coming up with great ideas moving forward to get us in, you know, a place that we feel that we should be going as a district. So thank you.
And I can only echo those statements from, from Talina in that it has been really such a fantastic opportunity to work with everybody and on my end to hear maybe some of the voices that I didn't even think about as a student. And it's been very eye-opening and we're very, I think all the stakeholders are very gracious for the opportunity given to make some improvements in our district and we are just very gracious for that and for the time that you guys devote to. So thank you.
Emily, Talina, thank you so much for sharing this evening and walking us through those goals. Directors, we'd be happy to answer any questions or any feedback. I know that all of you have participated in terms of observing one of these sessions. So that's been great to have you there as well. So I'll just turn it over to you, Kyle, and any other board directors for questions or comments.
I'm just going to say thank you, Emily and Talina for joining us tonight and sharing. This is amazing. Having been to one of the meetings and then to see the work product that's come out of it, it's really nice. And I want to first open it up to questions to the other directors, but I also can't help but comment how consistent the themes are and the goals that your group developed with the feedback we heard through the superintendent's search process. So I think that there's just a really shared common vision with this. So I appreciate that. Any other directors have thoughts or feedback, questions?
Oh, this is, oh, go ahead, Tracy.
I don't have any specific questions. I just, I have appreciated. I have actually been able to do to two times go to the superintendent transition meetings and I've really appreciated seeing how the goals have been developed. I was at the most recent one where small groups kind of got together and formulated these goals based on the themes. And like Kyle said, I think, you know, we repeatedly have seen these same themes come out through feedback that we've gotten. And so kind of formulating that into goals. It's been a great process to be a part of and just, I appreciate hearing from lots of different stakeholders during the process. So you guys are absolutely right that it's not just, it's not just staff or, you know, you know, district level. People, there's parents and students. I've appreciated this last time, I think Janelle and I were both at a table with, with two students. Emily, you're one. And it's just really great getting to, to hear from different perspectives. So.
I just wanted to add, we, many of us directors had the opportunity to listen to the power of student voice at our most recent school director conference. So just seeing both the students participate in the actual committee, but then also that that has risen to one of your four goals. I really value that because I think that we are all here for the students. So we should kind of follow or anchor in our, in the student voice. And I have one question, and this is maybe more for Tom. And just all of the goals are written in the sense of, of making sure that there's an awareness in the community. So I'm just wondering how we'll start communicating these goals. And how we communicate this out to the community.
Right, yeah. Thanks for that noticing that they are intentionally written in a way that that conveys that there's action behind them, but also that awareness piece is equally important. So our, or I think our next step would be to develop a communication plan for enacting these. And as we go forward, backwards planning from June 30th, they're all written to be accomplished by then. And develop some different ways that we can share them with the community and share the progress as it goes along, you know, because there are going to be several steps involved in each of these. So I think that's sort of the high level is answer that I would give right now. We'll, we'll have to get give you more detail, obviously, as we flesh that out.
I appreciate that. I wasn't, that's kind of what I was
Yeah.
looking for. It's still in progress.
And just so you all know too, this timeline that we put together for the year was to come before you today with these draft goals. Allow you to hear them and then process them a little bit and give us any feedback that you have. You're an important part of this team and developing these goals as well. We will come together in December as a group again and try to have the goals finalized at that point. They've gone through a lot of different iterations. And even when we left, left the last meeting, as Tracy spoke of, we had a set of goals and then we opened that up for further feedback from the committee. And then Tom tried to take them because they were written from four different groups to just, just align words and phrases to make sure that they were consistent and had an end date, things like that. And then the team had a chance to review that again. So once we kind of wrap that up in December, then January, February and March are really about progress monitoring and communication. And then April, May, June is really about weaving this into the strategic planning process as was referenced in the goals. And so in the end though, in the spring, we will compile a report to you from the committee, from the team that kind of shows these were the goals. This is the progress we made. These are what we think will be the next steps. A lot of great ideas also came out, as you probably observed, that we didn't find their way into these goals because we were pretty specific about this is a year transition process. And some of the other goals are things that probably would find their way into a strategic plan. And so we kind of parking lot some of those so that you don't lose those. And that's why having Tom on, on this team and then also responsible from, for the strategic planning process is really important so that we have that through line through both of these committees.
Thank you so much. And thank you again, Emily and Talina and Tom for, for sharing.
Yeah, thank you guys for your time. I hope you have a good, guys have a great evening.
Kyle, would you like me to just keep this going on the, the content?
Sounds great.
Okay, our, our next topic this evening, we have Jennifer Blatchman here with us again. We talked a lot in October about Vancouver Innovation Technology and Arts Elementary School, VITA. And the board gave some direction around what the programming will look like for the 2022, 23 school year. And so we are coming back to you with some updates and some more opportunities for feedback. So I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share some updates with you all and hopefully get some feedback from you all. It's been a little while since, since we've looked at VITA pieces. So just a quick recap. Again, we're serving second grade through fifth grade students. In, in job embedded learning labs, our teachers will go. It's a structure for collective engagement, learning through teaching. We're very much in the process of planning that. At the moment, it's really exciting and innovating and invigorating rather. Just the conversations that are having, happening around planning this work. So we're right in the thick of it here. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So again, in second through fifth, we'll have approximately upwards of 500 teachers that will have the opportunity, opportunity to attend, be a guest learner at VITA. And then we have second grade through fifth grade students who will also have that opportunity. So upwards of 6100 students-ish to participate in the learning lab experience for next year. Next slide. The part I think that's really exciting is where we finally can engage in some conversations with you all as we are in a good place in this process is around just kind of eliciting feedback around strategic partnerships. Obviously, you know, we've, we've learned a lot together on the VITA journey in terms of kind of the planning process up until now. And then looking at having you all look at some VITA learning lab mockups for the graphic from VITA that will only be used for next year. If, if the school and when we change to, to a magnet school, we will have a different, obviously the kids will be engaged in that process. So this is kind of a temporary one year. And the thinking behind that, and, and you've seen some evidence in this unique building around innovation space. And the variation in the architecture in the school with the binary code and so forth. So when you, when you see this graphic, that's kind of what you'll have in mind. Our awesome communications department gave various opportunities for, for choice in that. So Jeff, if you could click the feedback. What I'm hoping is together that we can look at some of these options. Hang on here, we'll get the screen a little bit bigger. And whether now or at some point in the future, you'll have the link to this and really what we're seeking, your feedback and input and, and any collaboration around is first of all, the six design elements for the, for the graphic. If one just speaks to you, there's stickies that are on the right side of it, electronic stickies. And you can use those or not use those. It doesn't matter, but you'll have the link to this. Or you can just share if you have a preference for one, two, three, four, five or six embedded within those are all of those space themes. So does anybody have any that jump out to you while you're looking or thoughts? Kyle?
Well, can I just ask a quick question before we start on the design?
Sure.
Do we know what the project is that we're going to be focused for the, that seems like that might anchor some of our feedback?
Yeah, you know what? We're going to, we're going to get to that part in the next part of this. Actually, we just started with, with this. So yes, we will get to that. We're hoping for some feedback in that area as well.
Well, I'll just share that I think that the graphics, both the, this main graph, the logo should reflect kind of the theme of the, the project. And some look spacier, some.
Let's actually, I'll go ahead and go to that next slide. Jennifer, if you don't mind, and maybe you can talk a little about the essential, essential question.
Yeah, of course. So one of the, we'll be doing this for, for a couple of different grade levels, but part of the project-based learning is the essential question. And so we've been, you know, having conversations about what is the project or problem? And you can see the example that I have listed. How can we as historians uncover and share stories about our communities? So this is just an example for, for, you know, when we're having all of these students from around the district here, might that be something to consider? Are some of the partners we have in our backyard as it relates to that essential question? So what we've done there, if we click on the essential question considerations. And, and again, this doesn't have to be today. This is more of a real I'm a slow processor, so in terms of just spending some time really thinking about that, but what that question could be, might be. And there's some samples at the very top. And if Jeff, if you scroll right on the arrow to the left, yeah, that's okay. So how can we help new friends get to know our community? Might be an example. I shared the one that we had listed. How can we as historians uncover and share stories about our community? And then there's one more that's a little bit further over that you see that's a little more in-depth. How can we further innovate the future? And you can see the artificial intelligence, global markets, monetary systems. And identify the process that you observed on your, your historic experience visiting or through video reenactments and so forth. So kind of comparing innovation and how it used to look and how it looks now, or what was thought to be innovation previously. With some of the things that they have throughout the fort that we could, you know, With some of the things that they have throughout the fort that we could, you know, use that for analysis. So again, those are all options. We're hoping because fourth and fifth grade is going to have a hybrid model experience. We're hoping that we have maybe a grade two, three essential question. And we can look at standards and the teachers when they, they will be doing ultimately the final planning. But they can make sure that they're hitting those standards that are second, third grade. And then we're also looking for maybe a fourth and fifth grade essential question. So they have some, some variation in their experiences in the project at VITA. So those are just considerations. Are there things that jump out at you right away? When you're thinking about what we've learned?
So it just sounds like Jennifer, we're going to have the opportunity to process this and provide additional feedback offline. You'll send us.
Yes.
But initially, let's just do a pull out to the directors if anyone has any initial thoughts or instincts. I'm just going to say for me, and perhaps I'm too literal of a person. I don't think I really am, but I love the design of the building. It's a beautiful, inspired space and there are definite ties to outer space and space exploration with the light fixtures and so forth. I think if we're going to press further in the design aspects for next year, that the actual project that the students are learning needs to be connected to space exploration. That just seems intuitive to me. I don't think if we want a more generic or loose design and we aren't going to kind of have spaceships or orbits in the logo, I think we can have more broad or less connected projects. But I think if we're going to be have visual, I, I think people might just expect they're doing a, a more space theme like so the example, how can we further innovate in the future or comparing the historical use of innovation versus that seems like it would be consistent with the graphics. I love, I mean, I love the, the project that you've been using as an example of using history to uncover stories about the community. I just don't know if that would necessarily need a logo that had an orbit or a spaceship.
And you know, the other thing too, in discerning, I don't, if you, if you look on the websites for the education kind of areas of focus for Pearson, for example, they have a women in aviation. You know, historically, and then there could be a comparison to now as well. That was kind of another thing that came up. We're not really expecting to have anything concrete with this, especially these are questions that are crafted and revised, and that's really part of also the deep process of project-based learning. So you know, if you have just, there's no wrong or right answer, but areas that you're thinking of, the gardens or you know, cooking or as it relates to historical, non-historical or others related to space, just, you know, please put them on there and you will have the link to it for sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say Jennifer, I'm gonna need some time to really.
Yeah.
This, this, it, what Kyle said kind of makes sense to me too. It's like for the learning lab piece, we're going to want to make sure that we have a consistent message to the people that are going to be involved. So I think putting the questions up, you know, gathering the questions, figuring out what those are going to be or what kind they're going to be, and then developing a logo that goes with the theme of those questions would probably be something that will help communicate to the stakeholders what it is these kids are going to be engaging in. And I love the idea of the first thing we do with this brand new building is dive into this community. Because that's what bringing everybody together does is it creates a huge sense of community in a very diverse community. And so it'd be great to, if the logo could somehow reflect that. And again, I love, like Kyle said, I love the logo that you presented. But the disconnect kind of gives a different message.
Sure, sure.
So and I don't want to, I don't want to negate all the work that I know has gone into creating all of this. That's my first thought. But again, I need to just also process a little more.
So what's the timeline, Jennifer, in terms of the logo? Because I know that there's probably materials that get generated based on that, but it seems like maybe we want to nail down this piece of what kind of those essential questions are that will and then kind of back into a logo. Does that make sense?
No, it does. And I think what we can start with, I think what would be really helpful. Because ultimately the, the VITA teachers, this is a, this is a huge part of the teaching, learning process. Will be deeply invested in planning that unit. So what we're hoping to do is take kind of ideas that we get from this board and then have them do some digging in and learning with the resources that we have at our disposal right there and really capitalize on those, but with also with your feedback. Starting from this. So I don't think there's a hard set date. I would need to check with communications and I so, so I don't, I don't think there's a hard date on it, but we're, we're wanting to start to frame that for sure. We need to get our teachers hired. So we're, we're working through the process. And then the first thing we'll be doing is you know, starting to create that shared understanding together, the historical context in VITA, because we know it's quite involved and we want them to be invested in learning what the vision, mission of the school is, just like we all have been. They, they deserve that. So we'll go down field trips and all kinds of things planned. And then we'll we'll delve into some brainstorming just like this. And that's very much a part of the PBL process, which is what's been really phenomenal about everything with VITA is the collaboration. As we start to plan, plan and frame for this school.
This looks great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you, you're welcome.
Thank you for my kind of rambling questions. So we'll, we'll be diligent about providing feedback based on, and I assume we'll get the link shortly.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you will. Yeah, perfect. I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
The other piece that we're mindful of is not everyone pays attention to our school board meetings. And so like with our district leadership team and our union partners, trying to have an ongoing conversation of where we think this is going without prescribing it, you know, trying to be authentic to the feedback process, making sure that you can provide us feedback. But people are starting to be curious about what this looks like and like, what does it mean for me, right? If, if I'm a, a second grade teacher, what does that mean for me? If I'm a family that has second through fifth grade students, what does that mean for me? So and that's good to have a little like tension around that, like people are interested and we don't necessarily have all the answers yet. But I just want you to know that there's kind of that logistical part to this going on. And then the final aspect of it that we didn't talk about tonight as much is the the lab school professional learning aspect of it. And what does that look like? And so as a district, we're having those conversations and trying to bring in more stakeholders to say, you know, currently what are our coaches, what does their role look like? And what might it look like next year? Given this once in a career lifetime opportunity, right? And so we need to bring folks along and make sure that they understand the why behind it too. And that they can shape the vision moving forward. So it's a little bit of a delicate dance to, to make sure that we're meeting all stakeholders' needs moving forward. And Jennifer's doing a great job of, of trying to navigate that, so.
Yes, Jennifer, it's, it is a once in a lifetime opportunity and a once in a career opportunity. And I'm so jealous. I mean, I know I can go and watch, but to be on the learning side of it as a teacher just, it's so phenomenal. And I know that there is that balance, like you want to have enough framework so that you know what you're doing, but not so much that you can't maneuver when you get a new set of kids and a new set of teachers and what do they want to learn versus what did you have planned? So it's you got your work cut out for you, but I'm so excited.
A blast. It's amazing. So it's, it's good.
Jeff, Jeff, can I just follow up on what you just said? Because I want to ask a question, but I think the second point you made, just in sense of your, there's a lot of interest and wanting to provide communication. Is, is that perhaps a push that we need to have some branding around this? Is that maybe, okay, that's what I interpreted. So and, and I, I don't think the board would want to interfere with that. I think we just want to make sure that the branding doesn't force us too far down one direction, that maybe it's a little bit more generic to let the process play out. Is that fair? I'm not trying to speak for the directors. We don't want to interfere with the process, but maybe not go so space themed until we flush that. Okay.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense and why Jennifer kind of presented some of those varying ideas. And, and I think open invitation to all of you too on, there's a lot going on in the district. And so as board directors, clearly, you know, your role at the policy level budget level and helping us, but also your role as community leaders. And this is a pretty cool idea. So if you want to kind of delve in a little more on certain areas that we welcome that opportunity and want to provide that opportunity for you. So just keep us posted too, as we present ideas. And so tonight we thought about, you know, like that branding, the communication that's going to have to come out at some point. So trying to give you a preview of that. The last time when we came together, we wanted clarification on who and how. And so we got that from you. As we move forward, we'll start to get a little more probably into the staff level. Once, as Jennifer said, we get a high level essential question, a focus area, and then start to empower staff to really make that a little more ownership from them. And then once we get into the process, that's when student engagement and student ownership is really going to take off. So. Okay, Jennifer, thank you for your time this evening and for the work and preparing for it. I'm going to move us into the next content area. Clearly always the highlight of all meetings is the pandemic planning and response portion of our agenda. Think we'll all be happy when maybe this isn't a regular agenda item. Good news on the case rate front, as you all are pretty familiar with this slide now, and you've seen that since the end of September, we've been on a pretty steady decline, although we have not gotten out of that high case rate, the red area since or late July, early August. So it'd be nice if we continue with that. Of course, the news recently is about another variant. And so I'm curious and wondering about the impact of that. Certainly this summer, when the Delta variant became predominant, we were down in this yellow area and then we escalated up to the red area. So I know in my update with Clark County Public Health yesterday, they were getting a state update after our meeting and they're going to loop us in on any concerns. But at this point, we're continuing in the same processes that we've been doing and always appreciate their expertise and support as we navigate this as a public school system. As, as I always try to share, you know, our, our case dashboard for the district is updated every Wednesday. And then the school updates happen daily. If there are new cases, we are up to 18 cases through the school year that have connections to school, possible transmissions at school. And overall, we have 448 cases in the district. So again, the mitigation strategies that are taking place in schools, obviously with 448 confirmed cases and only 18 of those linked to school. And that's a credit to our students and staff that are really being mindful of those strategies. So that's really important to recognize and kind of stay the course. One area that we are exploring with Clark County Public Health is the number of quarantines. You know, trying to minimize the risk of transmission, but also maximize the number of days that students are in school versus out of school is something that I feel like we need to continue to adjust. And so we had a conference call with Clark County Public Health yesterday to talk through data collection. And what kinds of data do they need to, to decide if they can fine tune this contact tracing quarantine process a little? Like I think we've learned throughout this, that whatever we're doing in June probably shouldn't be the same thing that we're doing in in December because it's changed and evolved. And so we need to evolve our practices with it. So more to come on that front, but just want you to know that we continue to advocate with our public health partners for how can we help? How can we help with the decision-making processes? Because we know that it's tough to make these decisions. So that's in the works. Again, I think I spoke at our last meeting that the Department of Health has indicated that we will not receive any updated school guidance until probably the earliest of January. We continue to get some clarifications out and we share that with our teams, whether it's around contact tracing or anything else related to pandemic mitigation strategies. The last area is over the course of the fall, we've received comments from the public around testing options. What does that look like? And we shared with you that we started some centralized testing here at District Office and had some challenges staffing that, but we were able to pull it together. It still wasn't as good as we would like for our communities and families to have them all have to come to, to Central Office to get a test. And, and certainly as families have navigated this, it's really hard when your student is a potential case and you're trying to navigate healthcare, you're trying to understand what's going on. And so if we can provide access to people, that's important. And you've spoke to that and trying to make that equitable across the district. Not all kids and families have the same level of access to healthcare. And so we've recognized that. Brett has done a great job of looking at different partners potentially. And there is a partner that we have been in communication with Embry Health that would take over testing options, not just for our students and staff, but also potentially community members if they wanted to have access to tests. And that would be done not by our staff, but by Embry Health staff. So we are in the process of, of formalizing an agreement with them to make that happen. They still need to make sure that they've went through all the DOH requirements. And so there was a press release, I believe, today from them that I feel like was a bit premature because we have not received their DOH permits and we will not allow access until they've met all those requirements. But basically what it means on our end is just to provide space and it would be in a parking lot for like a mobile clinic. And Brett's done a great job of coordinating with our school sites. As you all know, some school sites have large parking lots that is relatively minor impact to have a, a mobile testing site. But other parking lots are very cramped. And so we're looking at kind of a tiered approach to this where the first phase would have five geographically spread out sites. So instead of having the one central site, our community could access at five different places that hopefully would be very convenient for them. Again, no district staff are doing that. It's just a partnership here. So a community member, this is an option. If it makes sense for them, great. If it doesn't, and they have another means to, to get the healthcare that they need through this testing, great, we just want options for people. So I wanted to give the board a heads up about that and answer any questions. Especially since there was a press release and our, our plan was to work through this and then share with our community first and then release to the, the public as, as a whole.
So my only question, oh Kathy, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, to me, this sounds like a great opportunity for for the people that want it to, to utilize it. I know the school where I'm currently working, the private school I currently work, they are offering testing to their, their families and staff. So it only makes sense that we do the same and to be able to have, hopefully if they get all the certification they need to have these certified healthcare professionals doing this, that should also alleviate any concern other people have. So I love the idea.
My question, and I apologize if you spoke to it, but does this, will this have any involvement with our winter sports testing?
It potentially could with. It potentially could with some programs like stay in school test to stay. There are some programs that are available when a student becomes quarantined, that if there's regular testing in place, that they can stay in school. And so that could impact our student athletes. At this point, our student athletes are, are tested through our school sites, like we talked about in the last meeting. So this would just be another layer potentially for, as an option for people. But at, at this point, we are going to still continue some of our own testing services until we can feel like this partnership is going to meet the community's needs. So there might be kind of double layers of, of coverage first, and then kind of maybe ease and transition this. But with the winter sports, that's, that's a pretty high level of ask of our families and staff. And we have systems in place now to manage this. We just see this as an enhancement potentially.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue to, to monitor these situations and give you updates. And you know, if you certainly have other questions or follow up, just let us know and we're happy to get you the information. Oops. I'm gonna share my screen again for the last part of our meeting. US Board Directors have been doing a lot of learning, whether it's about pandemic or superintendent transition. And some of that learning is just getting community voice and listening and trying to theme that and prioritize that. And then other is actually spending some time investing in learning. So I don't know if the general population understands how much time you all give to this role and, and how seriously you take the responsibility of making decisions for our students and our community. And so we had an opportunity to attend a conference recently, the State School Directors Association Conference, and attended lots of learning sessions. Kyle referenced the Power Student Voice was a session that many of us attended. And these were some of the highlights that I collected from you, based on the learning that you had. And so I'll quickly go through those and then just open them up, open it up to you, Kyle, and the other board directors to just comment on where we're at and some of other learning maybe that you've had that I didn't represent in this slide. The first thing is, you know, that student and staff wellness are definitely a concern. Certainly the mission of teaching and learning is, is, is obviously critical to what we do. And if students and staff are not in a state of wellness or not having their needs met, then it makes learning really difficult. And I think a theme that we heard throughout the sessions that we attended is trying to develop and sustain relationships, whether that's staff to staff, students to staff, staff to families. All of those different intersection points are really important. And you saw that reflected in the student, our superintendent transition plan goals, the importance of relationships. And so being mindful of that and how we bring people together. You also shared that we, we attended some learning related to equity policy and student advisory and the role of students on, in an advisory kind of role for the board. And it certainly seemed like some of the efforts that we're making in terms of engaging community around the equity process and providing multiple entry points into providing feedback. And then with student advisory process, really trying to expand and include as many voices as possible in that. We're, we're on the right track with some of the best practices that were shared at the conference and some of the literature that we've reviewed. I think this was a theme that has been prevalent for a couple of years for board directors of, there are a lot of immediate concerns. And how do we address those immediate concerns while keeping an eye on the horizon? And long-term opportunities that's presented to the district. And so that's an easy thing to write in a bullet point on a slide. It's a, it's a very different thing to, to, to balance in your, your roles and responsibilities. And then that last piece is, you know, we have this opportunity with the transition and leadership. We have an opportunity with strategic planning coming up. And so how do we collectively move forward to provide a great experience for our students in this community? And so those are some of the things that I heard from you as a result of the learning. I'll stop now and pause and let anybody else add in or questions come up regarding board development.
I just want to also acknowledge that Jeff joined us as well as two of our executive directors, which I think added to the experience that we learned together. So I just want to thank Christie, Bill and Jeff for their time and joining us. I attended the Wassa Conference a couple of years ago. And I have to say, it's, it's a way different experience when the whole board is there together because we're coming at it from our own perspectives. Even just the conversations about which sessions we were attending, what was in our interest, what was in our expertise. I think it really shows the balance. So I want to open it up to other directors to, if anyone's interested in sharing learnings or insights that you gained. Favorite speakers, there were many inspiring speakers.
All right, I'm gonna just speak just a little bit. I was waiting. I was gonna give everybody else a chance, but nobody else spoke. I really feel like one of the things that, there was a lot. There was just so much that reinforced what we were doing. Like you said, we're on the right track for the equity policy process. Process. We're on the right track with developing a student advisory process. And what the, the different sessions that I was able to attend were amazing, with the exception of one. And what they really spoke to was that last one, the long-term vision of how do we move forward as a district? And from, and using community feedback and using stakeholders' input. And it just reignited all the things that, you know, I say this all the time. I can't believe that I am almost just on the board two years. It feels like a lifetime, but it just reignited all those reasons why I ran in the first place. It's like, oh yeah, that's what we were gonna do. And so I was just very exhilarating and very empowering. And also a reminder of how important, while we feel like we're at this higher level and there, you know, the things that we do don't seem as day-to-day impactful. Those things that we make decisions on and eventually plan for have such an impact on what happens at the, at the one-on-one level with the students. And I was very excited to learn about, see the research about the things we've talked about. So I, it was a wonderful opportunity.
I really enjoyed the, the conference. It was really awesome to be with the other directors, with all the directors and our executive directors and our superintendent. I think also just getting to know one another, even though we have a lot of these meetings, we don't really have a lot of time to get to know one another personally. And I think just, and also in a very professional manner to be able to go in more in-depth in conversation. I really took away a lot of good gems on our equity policy, our student empowering our students. And I'm really looking forward to implementing them. One of the workshops that I went to, the, I guess I'd like to explore more with the board is our land acknowledgement. And how we can add that to our board meetings. And kind of either if it's a land acknowledgement or people acknowledgement. Just, I think we live in a very diverse area. And so how we can kind of be more aware of where the roots are of the land that we're in. So, yeah, so I, I'm looking forward to, I guess, talking more and implementing what we learned.
I think one of my big takeaways, I like how you summarized this, Jeff, in the first bullet point, the importance of relationships. You know, you had mentioned in that bullet point about, you know, staff wellness, student and staff wellness. But I think relationships for me was kind of the thread throughout all of the the keynotes and the sessions that I went to, whether we were talking about equity and that relate, you know, the relationships that, you know, teachers make with students and Brooke Brown sharing, you know, some of those visual examples and artwork that her students did. And really understanding students and their identity and how they see themselves really helps to build that relationship. You know, and when we're talking about equity, you know, realizing, you know, the student identity and how, and how they see themselves and really that sense of self. We're talking about student advisory and student voice and that relationship that we have with students. And that we don't just say we have students on our school board, but it's that relationship that we have with them in exchanging information and valuing kind of what they bring to the process. And then kind of threading that in with, you know, the sessions on mental health and the keynote about kindness. And, you know, our wellbeing and really those relationships we, we have with each other and kind of really digging into how we're doing and getting to know each other. I mean, in relationships, as Sandra said, as part of, you know, in between all of the sessions and after the day was over, you know, just getting to have dinner together and get to know each other and share stories. I think just relationships was one of my big takeaways throughout all of the different topics.
I would echo that for sure, Tracy. I think, I, I thank you, Jeff, for putting this, this list together because it, it really is a perfect and succinct takeaway. In terms of my takeaways, I think you hit every single one of them that I was going to share. But I think one of, like Tracy said, one of the, the most valuable pieces was just being able to spend some time to, with each other in a more informal way and to kind of sit in on some of those sessions together and bounce off, bounce some ideas around and kind of talk about what we were hearing and learning about. But I think one of the, the biggest takeaways for me was just a really deep appreciation for the people that I am fortunate enough to work with, that I genuinely like and respect my fellow board directors. And it was just a really, a joy really to get to know, get to know you a little bit better, Jeff, as well as Bill and Christie for that opportunity to, to, to kind of hear their ideas and what they're thinking and what kind of some of their visions for the district are. And I'm just, I was left, I left the conference really excited with, excited about where, where Vancouver is right now and, and really, really excited for where, where we're going next. There's a genuine passion for the work, a very deep commitment to the students and making sure that we're serving our students in the very best way that we can. And I, I just feel like we're so fortunate. We really do have like the right people in the right place at the right time in terms of where this district is going. And so it was, it, there was a lot of really wonderful and valuable learning. But I think I'm just, I, I, I guess it was appropriate because it was right before Thanksgiving to be able to leave with, just feeling very grateful for, for the opportunity to do the work and for the people that I do the work with.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing. Yes, I, I was actually gonna say that, what Wendy, she stole. But I did go into Thanksgiving week feeling very grateful just for the experience. It was three solid days of learning, but a really wonderful experience. And I also want to acknowledge that making time to connect with boards in our region, across our county, just knowing that there's solidarity in our county and our district. So, well, thank you very much, everyone, for sharing. And I think we're done. Correct, Jeff?
Yeah, just one last follow-up. I appreciate all the comments related to your learning. And as you're thinking and reflecting on that more, like Sandra mentioned, the land acknowledgement. If there are specific things that you would like us to potentially like schedule for a study session coming forward, please just let me know so that I can do that. We will have a round of individual and two, two at a time meetings coming up so that you can, you can save those then and just reinforce. I'm always making notes, but I want to make sure that, that we're reflecting the interests of the board moving forward. And I just again, acknowledge your time. I, I know that it's a lot of time that, that you give to the district and, and it's not time that's like, it's very complex and, and, and a lot of thinking required on that. And trying to balance all the different perspectives and find a path forward. Because I know you all want everyone to feel like they're a part of what we're building, right? And where we're going. And there's a lot of different perspectives on where we should go. And so it's, it's not an easy path to navigate forward. So just want to acknowledge your time and energy and effort. And a couple of things coming out of here. One, remember that Jennifer will be sharing some feedback opportunities regarding VITA. So pay attention to that and let me know or let Jennifer know if there's areas that you want to go deeper. If there are some takeaways that you want me to investigate further, I got the land acknowledgement one, Sandra. So others share with me and we'll do that. And then I guess to wrap things up tonight, I just want to again, acknowledge our staff. You know, the, it's, it's, we're, we're struggling each day to just have enough people to, to, to meet the requirements that the we have to provide students a great experience here, and they're working really hard. And sometimes the challenges just kind of raise themselves up. And I was talking with Kyle before that, you know, if I'm in my office, it can feel like, wow, the whole world's crumbling around us. And then if I go out and walk into schools and talk with student and staff, I always leave inspired. And there's a lot of great things going on too amidst the challenges. So it's kind of this interesting tension point. And so in acknowledging you and your service, I want to end tonight with acknowledging our staff and their service. We really appreciate them.
A good way to close out our month of gratitude. So thank you, everyone. We are, next meeting is December 14th. And everyone, have a good night, meeting adjourned.